All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at, what is it, 7:04 PM? Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion for the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Since we have one, we do by roll call, even though, okay, so we'll vote by roll call because we have one online. So you, you go down the list of councilors' names and you call us out? Yeah?
Counselor Wallace is present. Counselor Cox.
Katie, we're doing, we're gonna vote by roll call because we have a counselor online, so you just call our last names and then we'll each vote yes or no.
Okay, Counselor Wallace?
Your agenda, the agenda.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Counselor Wick.
Aye.
Thank you.
Agenda approved. Moving on to presentations, proclamations, and visitors. Do we have any visitors? Moving on, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
So we'll vote by roll call again?
Counselor Wallace?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Sidney?
Aye.
Counselor Wick?
Aye.
Counselor Cossaros?
I'm abstaining, so I wasn't at the last meeting.
Agenda passes, consent agenda is approved. The accounts payable is in the packet. We have no public hearings and no old business, new business, Ron. We have the sewer collection, cleaning, and TV inspection.
Okay, I will present, if you guys have any questions, I'm gonna turn those questions probably over to our Assistant Public Works Director, Matt Etzel, who's with us tonight. But what we have before you is a contract to approve a TV inspection of half of the city's wastewater lines, and we're required to do this inspection, I believe it's every five years. The prices of, like everything else, have gone way up. I think the last time we did this was about half this price, five years ago. And so what we're opting to do is, we're gonna try to do it in two chunks, half the city at a time. And so before you, it's a contract to do thirty thousand, thirty-three thousand linear feet, and I believe we're gonna do our oldest section of the city first, because potentially the newer section's not gonna have problems. And we went out, we did a request for proposals, and Seymour Pipe Service Company was our lowest responsive bidder on this project, and so happy to answer any questions that you may have. Otherwise, staff reports in your packet.
I don't have any questions, does anybody else?
I'll move to approve the proposal by Seymour Pipe Services Company for the cleaning and TV inspection of thirty-three thousand linear feet of the collection system and the amount of sixty-eight thousand five hundred from Fund 019-604 Sewer Improvements.
Second.
Vote by roll call?
Counselor Wallace?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Counselor Sidney?
Aye.
Counselor Wick?
Aye.
Counselor Cossaros?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Excellent. So in your packet, I believe, is a copy of resignation from Planning Commissioner Tom Yeomanz. He's just been really busy with his businesses, not able to attend, and recently said he's, he's just too busy to continue to serve. And so we need council to accept Tom Yeomanz's resignation. That would open a position up to be filled until December 31st of '24.
So do we just accept it and then declare the position open?
We have to vote on it.
What, have to vote on it? Oh, we have to vote on it? Oh, I didn't know.
It's just, we just need to accept his resignation, but it's just a vote?
Oh.
To accept the resignation.
I move to approve the resignation of Tom Yeomanz from the Planning Commission.
Second.
Vote by roll call?
Counselor Wallace?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Counselor Sidney?
Aye.
Counselor Wick?
Aye.
Counselor Cossaros?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. All right, the next item up is Resolution 3-23, and that's a budget amendment that I spoke about at a previous council meeting. And this was, when we approved the budget last year, one of the options that we were trying to keep the utility rates from inflating at the current inflation rate, which at the time was somewhere between eight and eleven percent. And as you know, everything got more expensive. Council had a desire to see if we could hold that off for a year, to give the community an opportunity to adjust with everything else that was being inflated. And so what we said was, we were gonna, we were gonna postpone our yearly transfers into our two capital funds to see how the budget was doing this year. And we think the budget's doing okay, and more importantly, we really need those transfers to continue all these projects that we have. As an example, the sixty-eight thousand dollar sewer TV system wasn't even on our horizon, but it's something that we have to do, and it would come from one of those funds. So we're proposing to go ahead and approve this resolution, which was allow us, before the end of this fiscal year, to do the two transfers, one into water capital, one into sewer capital. And happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I don't have any questions, I remember.
I'll move to approve Resolution 3-23 as presented by staff.
Second.
Vote by roll call?
Counselor Wallace?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Counselor Sidney?
Aye.
Counselor Wick?
Aye.
Counselor Cossaros?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Gotta love the hybrid meeting.
Okay, moving on to City Administrator Report, Corn Festival and Ground Marshall?
Well, actually, I think we have one other action item, which is the agreement for the citywide special event, Street Dance.
I have that online.
Is it not in the packet?
It is in the packet, but it's not on the agenda. I think we didn't get the updated one that had it on there.
The agenda is set in the end of the package.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's not in this packet.
The amended one that Tracy sent us had it on there, but the one that's printed out does not.
I didn't bring it.
So.
My apologies. I think I did the same thing to Ron.
Right, sorry, sorry about that, Mayor. And do you have the contracts in your packet? You've got the contract?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So basically, what this is, is, as council knows, one of the things we've been talking about is maybe evolving part of our corn festival event into a street dance. We have a local vendor that's very enthusiastic about hosting and is willing to pay all the expenses and basically host the event. So it would actually elongate the event, it would be a little longer than what we've been having. There wouldn't be a cover charge for folks, and families could come. There would be a designated area for the beer garden, which would be secure, but the rest of it would be open. So there's some advantages for the community. We actually think it's a good idea. One of the things council asked us to do was to just make sure that we had good quality entertainment. So if you look at Item 3C, one of the things that we wrote into the contract is, not that we would approve the bands that they contracted with, or we would tell them the band they have to contract with, but we would have approval before they contracted. So they would send us the bands that they would like to contract with, and then we would have final approval over those before they did that. There would be no financial contribution from the city. What we would be doing is, we would be helping to advertise the event. They would be advertising the event as well, so we would just be coordinating efforts. And then we would close the streets, the one street there, the one block for the event, and it would be an old-fashioned, you know, street dance. Other than that, the contract is the same contract we use for the skate competition special event. We've just changed the names and the locations, and a couple of the terms that council wanted. So I'm happy to answer any questions about the contract or the proposal. No, it's gonna be free. We, you know, for them, they have some advantages because they already do liquor there, they already do food there, where we had to bring all that stuff in. And then they don't have to charge a cover. We had to charge a cover just to break even. I think it's worth a try. I think, I think they'll do a good event for us.
Have they submitted any bands over to the city yet?
Yeah, they submitted two, two proposals, which I sent those to you, and I think one is Boondock Boys, is that right? Yeah. And I've heard them before, I think they're pretty good. And then the other one I wasn't familiar with, I wanna say Chris Martin. I know they, their band has played at the Kaiser Corn Festival, but I don't know anything beyond that, so I haven't seen them, I don't know.
I was just, I was just about to ask that.
It's, it's just gonna be the same as Corn Festival, it's gonna be up and down Main Street, the park, and people will walk up, yeah, surrounding areas.
I, I know that I had some questions and concerns about, like, just handing, handing it over to, it's just, it's a big event, right? We talked about what it's gonna look like, and I think from me, and I don't know about anybody else, and we talked about this in our planning session, the quality of entertainment, because it's reflected upon the city, right? I think we talked about this before, like, not just to have just any bands, and, so the way that this reads is, to ensure the events meet the expectations of the community, right?
Yep.
Triva Games, DBA, G3 will coordinate the band, or bands contracted for the event, and the city will agree to the selection before the commitment is made.
Yeah.
So that means that we will had final say, and like, what exactly does that mean?
Well, I, I think that means that, you know, they'll propose some bands. If we have somebody that we know is available, I think we can make the suggestion. They don't have, like, a relationship with anybody. The bands that they're suggesting are bands that other people have said, these are good bands, that host other events around the area. So they've done some due diligence. I personally, I think the Boondock Boys, I have heard, but I don't think I've heard the other one. You know, they're as good as the band that we had last year, but if you know somebody, I'm sure they're welcome to, you know, they'd be happy to look at that. So I think the way the process would work is, they would submit them to us. We wouldn't come back to council necessarily, maybe, I don't know, we could at the next meeting, but I would think that individually, we would send it out, and if council had an objection, they'd raise an objection. That, that's kind of the way I see that process. If you didn't like one of the bands, or multiple bands, they can keep looking, you know? But they do need to get somebody under contract soon, because summer, everybody's booking up. Yeah.
Does anyone else have any thoughts? Process?
I think it's worth giving this a try, and kind of just dipping our toe in the water, and go with this change, and kind of see how it plays out, and based off of that, kind of, you know, go from there. That's kind of my thoughts.
Anyone have any questions?
Okay, good, let's try it.
Go ahead, Nico.
Let's give it a whirl.
You cut out, can you try again?
Let's give it a whirl.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it's like, any, anytime we do an event, you know, all of our events have been trial and error, and we've improved them over time. I actually think this is a direction towards improvement, that's because, you know, that's how I look at it, how we evolve the event, we're always trying to tweak them to make them more community-friendly. And I think this is headed in that direction. Now, that doesn't mean that we won't do the event and then step back and reevaluate it and look at different things we could do, but you know, all of our events, Christmas in the Park, Superhero Carnival, even the Corn Festival, has been an evolution, where we've tested things out, the things that worked really well, we kept, and the things that didn't work well, we've tossed and tried again. So I just think, if we wanna try to grow Corn Festival, it can't all be within the city staff to be able to do that, because we just don't have the capacity, and you don't have the capacity to rely strictly on volunteers. So if you wanna evolve Corn Festival Week, which is what we've said consistently we'd like to do, it has to be done through other mechanisms, and just like we contract for the state skate competition, and we're looking to contract for other little parts of that, that's how we evolve the event, so it's not necessarily resting on our shoulders to do it, because, let's face it, we only have so much capacity, right? And we've made a lot of tweaks to Corn Festival, doing the shucking or the bagging on Friday, really opened up a lot of volunteer capacity for Saturday, because we weren't trying to do those things at the same time. The new corn cookers that we got, went, we went from needing twelve to fifteen corn cookers to needing one or two. So, you know, we're doing these things to try to improve the event, to make it, the user experience better, but we would have never done those things if we didn't give it a try and then tweak it, so.
I do have a question. I'm not, my concern, like, I love the idea of a business being able to make money, and that's not, like, like, any stress that we can alleviate from staff, wonderful. Is it feasible, like, let's say, could we, is there, is there funds to help pay for a band? Do we have that?
We don't need to, they're willing to pay, they have, they have a fantastic budget, they've got a partnership with the Fire District, and a couple of local businesses that are gonna sponsor. So honestly, we just don't need to do that.
But as a consideration, you mean the G3 doing it in Attleboro? Because the thing I'm stuck on is, you know, I live a couple blocks away. During Corn Fest, yes, some people do park on the street, we have dedicated parking. We don't have a typical downtown quarter, we got G3 and 200 feet behind, we got people's houses. They're gonna be, you're gonna have a bubble of cars parked in front of people's houses, blocking people's driveways, like, you're, this is, I'm sure the event will be great, but that situation is gonna result in a lot of pissed off community members.
Well, it's a special event, it's, it's five hours, once a year, and, you know, the, we do the parade, people park in the downtown corridor for the parade. Honestly, don't think it's that big of a factor.
If I come home on Friday and someone is parked where I usually park my car, that, that perturbs most people.
Yeah.
Blocking my driveway, yeah. That's what's gonna happen if you're trying to put two, three, four hundred people in an event, it's, you're expecting parking to be on the street for people's houses.
Yeah.
Could we do parking in the park and have them provide, like, a tram or something?
I just don't think that's necessary. We have a lot of parking within the downtown core, these two or three blocks wide through twelve blocks through the city, and for Corn Festival, people park all up and down this corridor. It's at night, there's gonna be parking in some of the business parking lots. Let's hope that it's that successful, that parking is an issue, because if it is, then we know that we've tweaked the event in the right direction, but I just don't know that it's, I mean, parking will, you know, we just don't have that much parking in the downtown, that is true, so it's always an issue, but I don't think it's anything different than Corn Festival, pardon me?
Why can't you do that? You have.
Well, because you're.
If you have dedicated parking, it's a way to help.
Well, I mean, you're taking a business that has a business location, that has set it up so that they could get the surrounding acreage to be able to host a big event like this, they're there.
It's a area of people's houses.
They're there, they're, they're, their business is already there, their liquor license is already established there, their food system and their cook kitchen and everything is already there. If you want, they're doing this to drive business into their business, they're not gonna do it if we tell them to go do it at the park, it just makes no sense. From, from a business standpoint, that wouldn't, they'd have to rent security fencing, just like we did, they'd have to rent a stage and tents, just like we did, you know?
The alternative is, they're doing an event that's essentially right off of people's front of their homes.
Well, it's the downtown, it's the downtown business district, that's where we have, you know.
For the G3, I can spin it some of the houses.
Well, there's businesses, there's, there's non-conforming homes that are in the downtown business district, but it is the downtown business district.
So they can tell that, just the media. Why on earth would you be doing an event?
Council does not have to approve this contract, this was directed for me to prepare from council, if they don't wanna do this event, we can, we can move in a different direction.
There are alternatives. Tell them. There's a viable alternative.
It is something that we did talk, Derek, I want you to know, it is something that we did talk about in, in our work session, right?
I'm hearing that now.
Right, I know. So it is something that we did talk about in our work section, and the direction was to have a proposal come forward. That's where we're at right now. So what, what do we need on this, Ron?
We need your approval to execute the contract, if that's the direction council wants to go. If it's not the direction council wants to go, then simply give me guidance.
You need a motion, or just?
An approval of the contract.
Approval for him to sign.
If that's the direction that you so choose to go.
We have a motion? So without a motion, then it doesn't get approved. So if we don't have a motion, I, I can't make a motion, it has to be somebody else.
So I just had a question. So is it just some, you know, some hesitation on the part of the, some members of the council as far as approving this contract as is, is that kind of the reason why we're not, you know, seeing a motion come forward? I mean, I'm more happy to put forward, vote on this, but I mean, I also wanna make sure we're addressing any concerns that exist, you know, so we can do our best to try to have.
As far as my concerns, I, I've already voiced my concerns, and that had to do with to make sure that we have a quality entertainment. I want businesses to make money. I love the idea of not being able to charge a cover fee, having it be family-friendly, all those things. The, the parking is, is a concern. So if anyone else has any other concerns, they should, or opinions, it's okay to disagree, and this is why we have these sessions, so that we can talk about it. Like, if you have opinions, I, I want you guys to bring them forward.
My only concern would be the parking. Now, at first glance, it looks like plenty of parking for a couple hundred people. But if we have four hundred people, then you're right, four hundred people's not gonna fit right there.
But anyone claiming from their spot, there are other businesses, one business is benefiting, while others are having a detrimental.
Well, we can't grow parking in the downtown core.
No.
This doesn't, yeah.
It doesn't work that way, so, you know, what we do is, we identify, as an example, when we ran out this community center, we identify parking in the surrounding area, and that includes on the side streets, where there's homes. It includes those places that are not open at that time period, those other businesses, the post office, the store along Main Street, and Fire District, that's where people, you know, they, they park when there's any type of special event.
The next best new building is happening, which is, last time, this is the next best.
Do we have a number of attendees from last year?
That attended the event? I think it was around three hundred.
That was with a cover charge, so without a cover charge, it will be more.
Yeah, some people will walk, you know, if they're, if they're close, some people will drive and park.
I think, I think the appeal to the community of, of having a family-friendly event, which is something this community does really well, like, we have really good family-friendly events, and we have good turnout.
Yeah, I'm not sure where to go, because that's my only concern. I really like the idea, but, you know, if somebody blocked, I've had people park in my driveway, and it does, it gets you instantly.
So that would be my only concern, is parking.
But how do we ask them to get a tram and give them a parking lot over there?
Is that something that can even be done?
I, I mean, listen, we get five thousand plus people at Corn Festival the next day, we only have a couple hundred parking spaces identified in the park. Where do these people all park? They all park right up and down this corridor, and, and, and it's, it's thousands of people. I honestly think we should see how it goes, and then if it becomes an issue, then next year, maybe we look at that as some sort of parking alternative, but either you do the event in the park, this year, which has always been council's option, and we're happy to do that, or you contract for the event, those are, those are, those are really our options. I don't, I don't think we can ask them to do some sort of shuttle service. What we can do is, we can identify, work with them to identify places where people can park, and, you know, we can sign that for folks.
Ask them if they're willing to do it in the park, or is that a requirement?
No, they won't do it in the park, we've talked to them about it. So if they wanna do it at their business, where they have all the food facilities, the whole idea is, if we go to the park, there's a mobilization cost in that, which we've had to pay, and they would have to do that as well. The whole idea of them hosting it is, they can do it less expensive than us, because they have an established facility.
It doesn't, it doesn't do the event any, any justice, and it doesn't grow the event if it pisses off a quarter of the community as a party, and, and it makes the other businesses in town mad, which they are on the road, they're less likely to reach the slouches for the event.
Is there?
I think we're making a lot of assumptions here, that may or may not be an issue, honestly.
There isn't anything that we can do to, like, provide a shuttle? There isn't anything, like, we can do as a city, that we can provide a shuttle? Is that something that we can do?
Counselor Cossaros?
Oh, Nico has his hand up.
Well, we don't have a shuttle.
I was just asking, like, I'm asking, what is, like, what is within, like, what do we have, like, what can we do? But Nico has his hands up, his hand up.
So I, I think my opinion just of, of this is just, you know, I'd really like for us just to give this a shot with G3. I think that what we can do to kind of, you know, make sure that our ducks are in a row, and that we're addressing all the issues that we've got, as far as, like, parking goes, maybe just work with them to identify, you know, maybe where some parking could be, try to alleviate the situation a little bit, and. work with them to identify, you know, maybe some parking could be, I try to alleviate the situation a little bit, and honest to goodness, I think we just need to give this a shot, and if it's, it doesn't work out, it doesn't mean that we can't make changes and be able to, you know, positively impact the event in the future. You know, this is a huge event for our community economically, culturally. I mean, there are businesses that have the very best, you know, sales numbers, you know, the day before, day of, and I think just, you know, honestly, I think we need to just, you know, trust G3, and then we can coordinate with them if we have some specific concerns regarding parking and give it a shot. And, you know, if it all comes to pass that, you know, it wasn't a good event, then we have that information and we can make some better decisions in the future and maybe keep the, you know, that piece of the event kind of closer to our chests and kind of, you know, under our wing, but she was really awesome, and I know she's, you know, been in business for a while, and she does know a lot of good people to be able to ensure that there's payment we have is gonna be of quality, and I think it's definitely worthwhile just based off her background and experience, just kind of working with her to make sure we get that done. And if it turns out awesome, you know, then all the better if we need to take the event back and have it be under our, you know, tutelage, you know, then we can, you know, do that in the future, and it's not a, you know, be all end all. It's kind of my opinion.
If that's a motion, I'll second it, Niko.
So I guess I'm gonna go as far as making a motion. I just, I, I moved to entered this agreement with G3 with the changes of just staff working with them to identify appropriate places to be able to park, kind of alleviate the street congestion is just my, my change to it, what that would be.
Our best. Second.
Counselor Wallace?
Aye.
Mayor?
I'm gonna say no.
Counselor Simeon?
Aye.
Counselor Wick?
Aye.
Counselor Coster-Rose?
Aye.
Okay, we'll, we'll work with, we'll work with them to identify approved parking areas where people have given us permission. And then any overflow parking will be the park. And then people will just have to, as they get further out, they'll have to walk more.
And just do the best we can, and that's all we can do and see what happens. I, I'm curious.
I think it's a great idea. If we, if it's a parking nightmare, then we'll
Well, if, if it's a parking nightmare, then we know the event is more successful, and then to me, what that means is we need to, we need to figure out how to reorganize it so that we've got the ability. If they know that the event will bring in a thousand people, then that puts a different light. You know, you might be able to look at how to tweak a parking shuttle or something like that, but to do, to say you have to do a parking shuttle, have a staff person to rent a vehicle to be able to do that, that, that's, that's a lot of expense.
We have that little train thing, that little, that we ride.
Our little tram, the battery wouldn't last, otherwise we could use it. All right, so if you'd like me to move on to my report, the one thing that's before the council to do for the Corn Festival now is to propose a grand marshal.
We have nominations?
No, we didn't, we didn't provide you with a list this year because last year you developed your own list, and we don't have to do it at this meeting, but what I wanted to do was get you thinking about it so you could provide nominations to come before the entire council. And if you can think of somebody, send those to myself or Tracy, and we'll reach out put those folks on a list, and, and then we could bring that back at the, I think it's the May 8th council meeting.
We have a list of grand marshals for like the last five years.
Yeah.
Can we, I would like to get somebody new, so if you could send that out so we don't pick the same person, or at least I, I don't pick the same person to.
Okay. Excellent. Other than that, the only thing else I have to report is our public workshop building. We haven't been able to get the financing contracts and approval put together for the unfunded balance as of tonight. That was supposed to come for you for approval tonight. We have until the first of May to award the contract to maintain the bids that we have, and I'm not clear as if we just have to send the intent to award or if we actually have to approve the contract by the first of May. So what I'm hoping is, is by midweek, we've secured that funding and actually have an approval letter. And then what we may end up doing, if we can put it off to May 8th, we will do that. If not, we may have to convene a special meeting just to approve that contract to meet all of the deadlines that's required. Unfortunately, the funding approval's taken a little longer than I expected because everybody's busy, and we were expecting to get those in, but we did not get those in this week. And I'm hesitant to award the contract without the gap funding. Yeah, just, it's too much risk. O- other than that, everything else is moving along. As you can see, we're starting to push out Corn Festival information. We are securing vendors. I think we're probably more than halfway there.
Thirty-four as of today?
Yeah, so we're, we're a good halfway there from our target for vendors. So that's going really well. We're gearing up for Superhero Carnival, another community-wide event, and we're getting lots of good response for that. And then, as you know, Friday, the 28th is our Arbor Day celebration at, at the middle school, elementary school, elementary school here in Umsville. And I think that's at 1:30. Is that right? 1:30. So if you, if you all want to attend, it won't take very long. It's about a 20-minute, 15, 20-minute event and presentation, but we'd love to have all the council come. They could. And then Saturday is our half-day retreat or however long it takes, but I don't think it'll be more than a half-day. We've already done a work session and talked about a lot of our strategic planning stuff, so we'll have some open time for just discussion. What time? Nine o'clock.
Is that the Saturday?
This Saturday.
Okay, I'll put it in right now.
Yep. And happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, so moving on to, where are we at? Mayor and counselor reports. Does anything, anyone have anything to report? Newspaper article came out today on our wastewater. That was, I think, I think the article was good. It was very informative, talks about the challenges that we've been facing, what's led up to it, and what we're doing. Guys haven't seen that in the state. Moving on to Good of the Order. Nothing for Good of the Order? No correspondence? We can go ahead and adjourn the meeting. There is no executive session, so we will end it at 7:42 PM.